Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com/fortyninecountynewsTV.
Busy and he's decided to give us a few minutes of his time.
Glad to do it.
Tracy, while I'm talking with this young man, if you want to kind of catch the council up on what's happening with the new inaugurations and all the things that have been going on, you've been attending several of those.
We have.
And you can tell us what the slate of new officials look like in the state of Alabama if you want to.
I'm pretty excited. I think we've got a good group coming in and we've talked about, the State's Trust has been betrayed in the last several years. So there's a lot of work to do to try to earn that back and it's not going to happen overnight. We got our committee assignments Friday and so we're going to be doing Public Safety and Homeland Security, Child and Senior Advocacy and Education Policy. So we think we've got some good committee assignments. If y'all come to Montgomery one day or as many days as you want, I'll be in office 525 C. That's just down from the Speaker's office. I was hoping to be on the fourth floor. Those offices I've been told are bigger. But once we were asked, we had been asked by the Speaker to serve as a whip, which I was pretty tickled to be a freshman to get that opportunity. And so working more closely with him and the leader, they've asked us to have our office just down the hall from his. So it would be more convenient if we need to, you know, have a meeting or something really quick. So we're staying out every day and been to the senior center here in Hamilton today, combined with the mayor, been by the schools. You know, try to make as many stops every day as we can and we promised to everybody, if you elect us, you won't have to come find us. So we're going to be accessible to Mayor T. We're by here pretty often or here hour on the phone. And so we're just trying to do what we told everybody we'd do and we're excited.
Tracy, we appreciate those comments and your schedule is way beyond the normal schedule and I appreciate all the stops you're making. I think you're trying to help as many causes as you can.
Yes, sir.
You know, you run your wheel off once in a while just to watch, boil it up for your own health.
I mean, I'm talking, I'm speaking to the choir here. I know, y'all know this from going to ball games, to Walmart, Hamilton here and church. The more accessible you are, you're going to get your bottom side chewed out a few times. I know y'all know that. That's all part of, the worst chewing I ever took on the school board was in the frozen food section at the grocery store. I got chewed for forty-five minutes by a grandmother who was upset her granddaughter was not starting my eighth grade basketball team. I had to explain to her board members had nothing to do with that. But I believe and I know y'all do too, that the more accessible you are, the more successful you can be.
Sure.
And how are you going to be the people's voice if you don't ever see the people?
Yeah.
And so we, I've tried to be at the senior center here, if not once a week, every week and a half or so. I think we've got most of the meal programs. There's still a few minor issues I talked to them about this morning. The portions are maybe not quite as big as they want, but the schedule is now better. It's getting delivered in plenty of time. It's meeting temp every day. And the quality is better. Not what they had on the previous vendor. It took us a few weeks to get that worked out, but we finally did.
It was awful for a while. Thank you for helping that.
Really bad. So any way we can help, you know where to find us.
I know our seniors appreciate the effort because they were very disappointed when the new company came in and were totally unacceptable what they were doing.
But we're still, we're speaking of the senior center, I'm supposed to talk to Keith again later today. I'm still very confident we're going to get a new bus for our facility here. And that's going to be great because the one we've got now is just, it just doesn't meet the standards our seniors need. So I'm optimistic this calendar year, we're going to see that happen for our seniors here in Hamilton.
Well, thank you very much. We've got a few things on our agenda. We're going to move forward now. Tracy, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. Oh, this is your meeting, Mayor.
Stay as long as you want or you can go when you're ready.
I got another meeting here shortly, but I'll stay for a little while.
I'll invite you to stay as long as you want to. Young man, you had a matter to discuss with us today and I believe you're from the Harper's Junction station. You wanted to talk to the council about some of the things that y'all need to see happen up that way and don't know if it's possible or not, but lay out your program for us and we'll listen for a minute.
Yes, we were interested in being incorporated into the city limits and I was trying to see what the process or what all is needed to be done. I know there was an issue with some residents close in that area that were against being incorporated in the city limits. I was under the impression that there was another route to go where it wouldn't affect them, but I was just trying to get some information on the process or what I needed to do or where we need to go from here mainly. Get the ball rolling that possible.
That's why I was hoping that our attorney, Mr. Scott Hunt, could be here today. He's at court this afternoon and couldn't be with us. Normally he makes these meetings, but was unable to be here with us today and he could address more of these legal issues. The petition we received from the area up there was the folks that were out of the city limits said, "We're not interested in coming into the city limits." Contiguous borders, common borders with your property is what we would need to be able to incorporate you. And we're going to have to go against their will to come up to you as far as getting our city limits out there so you can be a part of the city. So it's going to be very difficult to upset the citizens that will affect and their wishes. I don't really know what for the city to do it. I really don't know. And I've looked at it since two years ago when we took office and we tried to think through it and see if there's some way we could do it. I just don't know. I really think probably that we want to have you here on a day that our attorney can be here before he'll know the real rules and see if there is a way. We're not against any business that operates and creates revenue. The taxes is what we need from your operation, of course. And if business is good, we get a portion and we very much like that. But when things are this difficult for us to reach out to the Harper's Junction area and bring it into the city. We're probably, I don't, I've not measured the exact distance. I'd say three quarters of a mile from the city limits side, maybe, maybe as much as a mile. So that's a good bit of territory for us just annexing, especially when the people have signed a petition saying they did not wish to be in the city limits. Do you guys have any other thoughts on that that you want to share with this young man today? Anything that you know that we can do to help him in his plight?
What's your name?
Josh Alexander.
Do you own the station?
Uh, no, sir, it's managed.
Who owns the station?
Uh, it's a guy in Birmingham named Vic.
Is he the one that requested to be in last time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, so he knows the process?
Yes.
Okay.
Previously, we had tried to go the standard route and the citizens in the area was against it. And we don't want to make anybody in the area angry. So I mean, if there's a way possible to bypass them so it doesn't affect them. Because I know they've made it clear that they have no interest. So, and we, last thing we'll do is, you know, make the local people around there angry.
We, we have kind of looked at the situation as it is as far as, there used to be a lasso type. You could reach out to one individual's area and bring them in, but that rule is no longer effective for cities. We have to have a boundary that's common with you to take you in to our city through annexation. But, and that would take in all those other people who have let us know they're not interested in being in the city. Anybody that comes in the city is entitled to city services, but they pay an extra tax to be a member of the city. They, they pay property taxes in addition to what they already pay that goes to the city. And I guess taxation is one of the big angles that they didn't want to be brought in for. But they're not paying city taxes now. And some of them are on the Hodges Water System and, you know, and they just don't care to be a part of Hamilton at this, at this point. We wish they would love us and embrace us. We'd, we'd come to them and provide them the services for the taxes, but they just don't want them to come in right now. Let me talk to Scott Hunt. I'll try to get him to write something in an official way to see if there's anything the city can do to help you. But we appreciate you coming and letting us know y'all are still interested and me and you will talk some more in the next few days when I have a chance to run this with him. I appreciate you coming today.
Thank you. I appreciate you on the phone.
Rodney, you'd be next on our program. We've been, we've had some issues concerning our sewer and water rates and how minor changes could make a difference. And I think you've done some studies on this. I'm going to let you talk next.
Oh, we covered this, I think, in the last work session about the deficit or the deficit we had in the sewer department, of course. Oh, I've talked to every municipality in the state and they'll tell you they, you can't make money on sewer. That's just a proven fact. I mean, you can't charge enough for it. But I've come up with some, with a kind of a proposal to look at. If we adjust sewer rates, what it would, what the revenue would be. So go over it.
I've got one. Get your girl in and move it.
Starting on the left-hand side, of course, our current, our current rate is fifty percent of whatever the water bill is. That's what the sewer bill is. That's for resi, that's for residential and commercial and industry and everything. Now, these numbers I've got on here is based on December billing of eighteen, this last month billing. Came up with, on the, on the residential side, I had to, I had to go in and break down which is residential, which is commercial and all that. So I came up with approximately nine hundred and thirty customers on residential. And I took that amount of money that, for the month of December, which was twelve thousand eighty-eight dollars forty-three cents. And that's, of course, the amount on bill is ten dollars nineteen cents every month for a minimum bill. And then on the right-hand side, I increased the residential to sixty percent to see what kind of revenue it would bring in. Of course, that, that would be the difference of two thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars ninety-nine cent. And you multiply that by twelve months and a year, it comes out to twenty-nine thousand fifteen dollars eighty-eight cents. These, these numbers are not totally accurate. I mean, each month billing is a little different because people use different amount of water in each month. I went by the December bills because it's kind of a low, a low number because in the summer months, when people are using more water, the bill's naturally going to be higher.
Based on that, it's about a two dollar and four cent increase.
Increase on a minimum bill.
On the sewer. On the one, but.
How much? Two dollars four?
Two and four, yeah. Then I went to commercial, business and industry or commercial. Fifty percent, which is current on that, came out to eleven thousand eight sixty-six. If you jerk, jump that from fifty to eighty percent, it would be an increase of seven thousand one thirty-one sixty a month. Multiply that by twelve months, comes out to eighty-five thousand seven, five seventy-nine twenty. And if you went sixty, eighty, sixty on residential, eighty on commercial, the total increased revenue in sewer would come out to about a hundred and fourteen thousand five ninety-five oh eight a year. And like I said, those numbers are not set in stone. I mean, there's, those people, you know, water usage is different in different months. That's pretty much a, I think, a good number. And then we looked, we talked about maybe raising water rates one percent a year, every year to take care of chemical costs and that thing, that kind of stuff. And I took the last six months of billing and averaged out the last six months with a one percent rate increase would be an increase of revenue of fourteen thousand eight seventy-nine oh four a year. That'd pretty much pay for your chemical going up every year.
How much are we actually losing on sewer? I mean, just, I know you can't give what, you know what I'm saying.
Can't give an accurate amount.
No, you can't know what, but in the proximity.
I was trying to remember what, what the number was that Allen Capital came up with and I keep, I couldn't.
More than a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
One thirty?
Well, this, this one percent with here, this hundred and fourteen thousand five, that would pretty well put us up close to the even point.
It would, yeah, it would. And I checked around with different municipalities to see how they done or different systems to see how they did their sewer, which I think I mentioned this a lifetime. Hayable does like a sixty, ninety, sixty residential, ninety commercial. Winfield does a hundred percent across the board. And I think Solid does sixty, eighty. And this is just some, you know, I, the numbers I came up with were just kind of average to what other systems do.
Currently, we're below the norm for our area.
Right, I mean, we're a few across the border. Well, are you recommending this sewer increase here, the one percent? Is that what it is?
That one percent is on the water rate.
Oh.
That's on the water.
Oh, this is eighty percent.
Yeah, but.
What is it now?
It's fifty now, but I'd, I'd recommend sixty and eighty, sixty on residential, eighty on commercial.
Each residence on a minimum bill would pay about two dollars and four cents more for their bill monthly if we went up ten percent on the.
Sewer rate.
On the sewer rate.
Well, we got to do something. We can't just, we can't just keep on going the rate we're going, when we're going backwards every month or every year. That can't do it.
And the one percent a year on the water rates, I didn't put that on here, but if you do a one percent increase on water rates on a minimum bill, it's going to increase at twenty-two cents.
I think much.
Can still bring in almost fifteen thousand dollars a year.
But that's the minimum bill over.
Yeah, that's higher.
Higher bills.
That's a higher bill, it'd be a little more.
Be more, yeah.
All the residents that are on our current cable system were just given a letter that their bills are going up four dollars a month. That wasn't, if you want it to, that's, it's going to. They don't question whether or not the citizens want it. They go ahead and do it.
No, we know they're not going to want it. A lot of things I don't want. It doesn't matter from this point. We're going to pay our one pot and put another and we're going back.
Yeah.
What's happening with the city, and Rodney don't like for it to happen that way, is that we supplement his, his department every month with additional funds out of the general fund to help fund the water and sewer department. This would get him close to a break even on his operation, which is where we've been trying to look at getting to. And a lot of cities make money with their water. I know some cities that have some CDs in the bank from profit off their water. They sell water, they make money. And we sell water, we lose money. And I think it's time that we address this issue and we're not trying to be, be a big profit maker, but to break even on your operation would feel better than having to supplement it.
We are going to have to. And I think the biggest deficit by the cities having to put money in is coming from the sewer side.
Sure.
Because we keep, we keep making the kind of money we need to on sewer.
That's right.
Because our expenses, like our power bill is, is more at the sewer plant than it is at the water plant every month.
Those big pumps that turn that down there to wastewater treatment plant eat some electricity, I mean, in volumes. We pay thousands, thousands of power a month for the use of those pumps.
Is this what you're recommending here or not?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what did you say? A one percent on the water would raise the monthly?
Minimum bill would be twenty-two cents.
Twenty-two cents.
Yeah, that's the minimum.
That's the minimum bill.
And whatever the, uh, higher bill. Are there a lot of people that just has the minimum bill?
We do have several customers that just use the minimum amount of water.
But the big majority of them don't.
Yeah, I have.
Like me and you.
Yeah.
Just me and my wife. Well, we don't have any choice. I mean, you can sit around and talk about it and think about it from now on, but in my opinion, we don't have any choice. You can't sit around and keep losing money. Doesn't matter what you're doing. What do you think, Mayor?
I, I know it's time for some adjustments.
Ten nineteen, minimum.
I think Rodney's research is, is getting us similar to our area, not exactly like every one of them. As he said, Winfield has a hundred percent rate on sewer. Where we're doing sixty, eighty, sixty for residential, eighty for commercial, if we go up. Now, we're, we're half of what Winfield is at the current rate.
What do you think? I want your opinion.
I do, I mean, I really do.
Are the majority of the residents that are on the sewer, residents that are in lower income housing? I'm wondering how it's going to affect somebody on a fixed income, even though it's just twenty-two cents on the water bill and two dollars and four cents on the sewer bill, to do them both at the same time? Because we had a water rate increase last year, correct? Last year, year before last?
First year we were on the east end.
Okay. So, so have you, have you looked at that to see how it's going to affect? I mean, I don't know the ratio. I don't, I don't know where the majority of the sewer customers are, but that's something to consider is how we're going to impact those that are on a fixed income, even though it's just a quarter, assuming they're using them, or less than a quarter, using the minimum amount of water. But then we're doing two dollars and four cents on their sewer and I'm just wondering about doing them both at the same time, even though it's such a minimal amount to most people on the water. Have, have you looked at that? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do understand. And, but what I'm thinking is the, the ratio would, would look like, yes, it is the most people that are on a fixed income. Because all of your housing authorities is on sewer and they all each get a sewer bill. So, so that, that would jack the number up of lower income people to be on sewer.
That's my concern, is doing them both at the same time.
And you don't have to do both at the same time.
Right. So that's just, you know, that's just something to like about.
Put those numbers in there while we were, while I was doing.
But had you, I mean, it's, had you not rather though, you, you're going to have to do it anyway. Had you not, if you do this and now, they're going to, you're going to have gripe. And if you do them both at the same time, you're going to have that gripe. And then if you wait, you're going to have the other gripe thing.
Well, I mean, the sewer isn't going to affect me. I'm not on the sewer. I'm just trying to think about the people that are and trying to, you know.
Need help, yeah. And if you try to help those low income, well, you'll get eighty percent of them sitting there. Then we have a problem. The other day, something about the bills, didn't I hear you?
Sometimes this comes up.
Of low income, I mean.
It, it's always a sensitive area and I don't discount that. I, I really don't. I'm just looking at, I'm looking at all the people as, as water customers. We serve them with a service. We're losing money. I'm not trying to pick on any group. I'm just trying to look at them all as water customers in this case. Because we're talking about loss of this much revenue that can be gained and make our operations more efficient versus, you know, not doing anything. And, you know, the raise we got wasn't nearly enough on our raise. It had been eleven years, nine years, I believe, since we'd had any adjustment, when we made our adjustment. It wasn't enough when we went up. But we thought it was all we could stand at the time, but, I mean, I'm open to suggestion.
If you're just going to raise them a quarter on the sewer, how much do you say you'll raise on?
On the water, they'll be going up about twenty-two cents on a minimum bill.
Of water?
On water.
Yeah.
On sewer, it's about two dollars and four cents for a minimum user. And we're talking about roughly two dollars and twenty-six cents for a change in overall in their bill.
I have minded most of that sewer would be like you say in the housing projects and things.
Well, your downtown areas all have sewer. I think Oak Hills has sewer and all the downtown area basically on sewer. A lot of your outline areas are just on septic tanks and they still have water services. As we said, we're looking at nine hundred and thirty residential customers and two hundred and fifty-five of them. About, we've got about thirty-five hundred water customers, about eleven hundred and seventy, eighty of them have sewer service.
I'd hate to go up twice. I think we're just heading.
I'd cut the dog tail off it to ease it.
Yeah, that.
It wouldn't hurt.
Nobody likes to raise, but you go out there, it's giving you joy.
No, I hate to too. I'm like, I hate to, but, but we can't.
Well, it's, it's a service we provide. Our cost of producing pure water has gone up. Rodney's chemicals, he treats that water with. Those people don't have mercy when they sell it to the city. They're going to charge the, what they need for their chemicals. We're going to have to pay the price. We have to pay the price when we put the new vacuum systems in our vats up there to have cleaner water. All that stuff costs money and, you know, we're not, we're not trying to rob the people. We're just trying to be fair in our operations. We're under the rates that other cities are, are charging currently and that's why we want to make adjustments. If I put it on the. If I put it on the agenda for a vote, uh, I'd wanna saw and feel good about a vote and, uh, if you're telling me to only do one of these things, then that's what'll be on the agenda. If you're telling me to put them both in there, then we'll vote on it. You vote your heart. If it doesn't care, we won't raise it. If it does care, then we'll change it.
Well, this gonna hurt me to put, put it on there, chart it, some of them, whether we do it.
Rodney's, uh, done the survey and, and I, I asked him to provide the numbers, uh, and he's done a good job asking the questions in our neighboring communities as to what they're doing. And he's tried to come up with a median that's in the ranges of what they're doing. Not as high as some, but not as low as others. And, uh, we're right in the median now. If we do this and, uh, the, uh, you know, it's just something we thought we should look at. It was even pointed out to us very vividly by Mr. Cantrell, who reviewed our budget. Uh, he showed us where we were losing a good deal of money, uh, in our sewer operation and we can't get it to a break even point, but we can close the gaps some by doing this.
So everybody's water would go up, but then certain peoples that have sewer, they would have an increased theater as well? Is that right?
Yeah. Every customer would be affected on the water rate increase, but only portions of them, water customers will be affected on the sewer side. About a little over a third of them. Okay, we wanted to discuss that and we'll, uh, if any of you have any input before we sit on the agenda, if you'll give me a call, we'll, we'll talk about it. Um, the Love Truck Stop discussion is, uh, I wanted y'all to be ready for su- for Tuesday night. We'll not have a meeting Monday. We'll have it Tuesday. Tuesday night, we'll have Mr. Gleason here with us to discuss the Love Truck Stop, uh, matters, and he'll, he'll be here for a full discussion with the council at the Tuesday night meeting. He's the project site developer and he's been working on the Hamilton site and he'll be bringing his, uh, information to the table for us Tuesday night. Be ready. Talk with him. Item three, uh, is, uh, appreciate the nice write-up on, uh, that Scott. Thank you for taking time out to put some thoughts together and share it with the public about our love that's coming. We appreciate it.
Yeah, that was a good art.
Yeah.
It's good news, yeah.
I do believe that the impact it'll have on our city's gonna be mega. Our cable company currently, uh, has a spot in our city hall and I think they're paying us the same here as they were for, through, over the years. What's that?
I think it's three hundred dollars.
Three hundred dollars a month is, is our rent for the cable company. And we, uh, I think we pay them probably nearly that much and our, our TVs were, uh, we got TV in two or three places. We got one TV here. I believe that it's, that one could be hooked. We don't ever use that one except for PowerPoint presentations, but it could be hooked to a cable. We got one at the fire station and one at the, I guess, I don't know if we got TV at the library or not. We got one at the police station.
There's tier three at the police.
Yeah.
Be a good time since they're raising their rates.
Yeah, uh, I've thought about considering something, a change for them and, and, uh, it's been years and years of the same constant fee for them and I don't know how y'all feel about that. I think we provide them a nice place. We have a place that they park their service truck here and that they, uh, are provided power and water and bathrooms and everything that we, uh, currently pay for.
Yeah, they don't even have power bales or anything.
No.
Water, nothing.
All the utilities coming through one meter, like three hundred a month's all it costs them to have a place to house their operation. I was thinking about making some sort of a change in that and I'm just gonna need y'all's recommendations, uh.
I think, we need to see how much we've been paying them rent on. TVs we have in the library here.
Yeah.
And maybe we just, if it's more than this three, we, we quit paying them their rent.
We, uh, I think probably right now, they're coming out pretty good.
Do I nail on our insurance or do they have renters insurance?
If they have renters insurance, I'm not aware of it.
So does our insurance policy cover the?
It covers this building and that's part of it, so.
They don't have anything.
Good question.
But as far as liability.
How do you would think of that question? Good question.
Liability or whatever, I don't know what that is.
I mean, renters insurance is available.
Like if you don't own the content, we'd have to have renters insurance cover that content. So any property they would have down there probably wouldn't be covered under your insurance if they kinda filed a claim for anything damage.
No.
We don't get to go in their office. They got their own code and they control their office and we got our code to go in the water department and where we collect our funds. We don't, we don't enter their premises and.
They wouldn't cover any of their equipment, is what I'm, what I'm saying. That's from insurance families. That would, that's what they're paying you.
I hope they have some insurance if they've got valuables in there. I know they got a couple of color TVs in there, but.
I'm sure they do.
They don't have, that, that three hundred dollars, when you pay their heating and cooling bill.
Yeah.
Boy, they've had a deal.
We, we really need to consider this and, you know, uh, we, like I say, it's in our service for the citizens to be able to pay dual bills here, cable, water. Uh, but still, we're picking up the tab for a lot of their expenses.
How about looking and seeing how much we're paying them each month for TVs?
I will. Yeah, it was kind of, it's pretty close to being about the same amount.
They get real boring.
Yeah, they are. But I'll, I'll check and see who else still has it.
I, I think it's time for us to reconsider the amount and, and I want y'all to think with us on this and give me some suggestions along the way and we'll act on it according as, as you guys dictate. And, uh, I really think it's time for us to consider some change. Wanted to, uh, invite all of you to the, uh, upcoming economic summit that's gonna be hosted by, our city. The, uh, location of the summit is at the Tom Bigby office. It'll be next Wednesday from ten to one. We have, uh, the director of ADCA will be our feature speaker along with the state treasurer's office. Uh, what, our new state treasurer, John McMillan, will be here giving an address. Uh, Bill Bowden will be speaking on behalf of Senator Jones. We'll hear from Tracy Estes and the mayor of Florence and others that are gonna be speaking and.
Is that a week from today?
That's a week from today. It's from ten to one.
Ten to nine, sixth and maybe twenty-third.
The, uh, the mailouts and the mail are being provided by Tom Bigby. We, it's not costing the city anything to have this. We've been privileged to have them pick up the tab for us on that and.
When does it start?
It starts at ten o'clock in the morning. We're gonna register from nine-thirty to ten. We'll, we'll start sharply at ten o'clock and we'll cut off at one o'clock. We're gonna have some roundtable discussion, uh, to, we're trying to showcase Northwest Alabama, which is, we've been cut off from, from the powers that be for years and years and we're, we're losing ground when we're not gaining ground. And, and we wanna set up, Northwest Alabama is a showcase that we have smart kids. We're, every decade, we turn out about five thousand graduates. Every ten years, we put five thousand graduates out to the world. How many of them come back to Marion County? Very few, very few. They go get college education and spend all their life making their fame and fortune somewhere else. We want, we want to offer jobs in our region that'll bring these young folks back. Until we start growing, we can't do that. So the thrust of this is to, to help recognize Northwest Alabama for what it is. It's a good area of the state. Our kids are as smart as their kids. And we shouldn't be deprived of opportunity in our areas and, and we have been for a long time, so. The thrust of this summit is to just bring people here. Uh, some of the folks we've invited weren't able to come. We, we didn't get the, this is our first trial on this and we didn't get the invitations out quite early enough. They needed, some of them needed six months to plan to come, the people that were invited. I mean, uh, uh, we had no idea that you had to mail that forward in advance, but, but we're learning from this one, so. Uh, anyway, uh, the, uh, summit will happen. If it's not super successful, we'll get out of it what we get and we'll learn from it. But I think it's gonna be very good, uh, overall. A couple of speakers that we'd hoped for, uh, I was given the address by a third party on the executive from Boeing Aircraft. His, uh, this is the third mailing to the addresses we've been given for him and I got it back on my desk today, his return mail. I don't know how you reach this guy. I reckon he's an invisible man somewhere in Washington State. But, um, people are supposed to be in the know, gave me these addresses and I've handwritten him a personal letter twice and I mailed him two invitations printed, had them mailed and, and, it's back on my desk. Anyway, we were expecting him to come and, um, little bit of, um, area there that we'd liked to have happened, it won't happen, but, as I say, we're learning. Room in the Shoals, Room in the End Shoals Incorporated, is a place for people who are homeless or without shelter. This was given to me by Jeff Fleming a few minutes ago. Their phone number is two-five-six-two-eight-four-seven-three-two-nine. And if you have somebody during this gutcoming cold spell that needs shelter, we can surely get them to this. We don't have a place designated right now for shelter in Hamilton, Alabama, for homeless or desperate people that are cold. So there's a place in Muscle Shoals and it's federally funded. Uh, it's actually in Florence. Don't, don't get me wrong, it's in, in, but it's called Room in the End Shoals Incorporated. And, uh, it's actually on Chisholm Road, Florence, Alabama. And Jeff wanted people to know that, wanted the council to know it in case you have, uh, and there's a change homeless project that's, uh, coming through the Community Action Agency. That's if you know somebody living in a car and that's their only place to live. If Jeff had a chance at them, along with Susan Cole, who's kind of the director of this, they could probably change that person's life, so. They've actually had one get a graduation certificate. She was living at the off-ramp on the Mississippi Rest Stop. That's where she was living for a good long time, in her car. And she was coming to Bevel and using the computers and she's recently achieved a diploma. And, and she's got two part-time jobs now that's gonna help her. So he said, there's a chance for these people. If you know somebody like this, they'll try, pick them up and try to help them if they're helpable. He said, there's still a deficiency in health for mental illness. Mental illness is a weak link right now. Uh, and he said that, uh, he hardly knows what to do for some of the people. Families don't want to, uh, admit there's a huge problem and then sometimes there's some terrible things that have happened because they didn't get help and, uh, but he said, mental illness is, is a weak link right now and that our state needs to address soon and the federal government also. Anyway, Jeff and I had a sit-down a few minutes ago because of this upcoming, uh, tra- uh, terrible weather that's coming in and moving in on us and he wanted y'all to know that this is available. And, uh, so if you know somebody that's without a place to stay during this cold weather, we could possibly find them some help. Still getting, I'm just gonna go with the general complaints that are coming in. Dogs and pets are, are still a, an issue. Unkept properties. Some complaints over burning and I've been through this with, uh, our fire chief and assistant fire chief and our police chief. Sticks and leaves are not prohibited in our city. You can burn those. You can't burn, uh, synthetic chemicals, plastics, uh, things that make toxic fumes are not to be burned in our city limits. If you're within five hundred feet of an occupied building, there's a rule about that. Uh, and if there's a complaint and you're within five hundred feet of the complaint, chances are there could be some penalties there. ADM, I believe, is, is really the entity that kinda enforces this. Our ordinance does allow for burning, especially if you're cleaning up your yard, burning the sticks that fell off your trees or the leaves. We do have a pickup service for leaves, the people who get them to the street. Our vacuum system's up and working again and Mike's willing to bring his men out and pick up leaves, uh, from time to time, but. We, uh, just, there's not, there's not a shortage of complaints. We still have complaints over our streets and roads that are still rough and Mike's just got a new load of plant mix in and they're trying to go around as best they can on drier days and fill some of these awful potholes till we can get to them again the next spring when it gets where we can sell a few more of our streets. Uh, but we, we got plenty of, of, uh, work to do. I don't know, uh, this rainy weather just don't make the pothole fixing very much. It wanted here to anything. You can put stuff in and two days later, it's come right back out of the hole. So we need some sunshine and, and a chance to, to fix these potholes to where they'll hold up for a while. We are aware of all this and, and, and we're working on it. Just, um, if, if you have someone tell you about a spot, if you'll cite me in on it. Mike's asked the garbage men to come back and tell him where the worst spots are. He's, he's asking to take, register those spots and, and turn the, uh, things into him so we can send the men out, uh, to the worst spots. And we're gonna try to keep these streets from getting so bad that it's hurting people's automobiles and stuff like that. Streets are still a mess. Of course, everybody thinks we've got tons of money to pay with. I think we took one of our funds all the way down this year, this year. Didn't we spend all the money on one of them?
Just about.
Down to almost nothing. Probably enough, uh, money in there to buy a couple of loads of slag maybe. But we got a little bit of money in the other gasoline fund, but not enough for a lot of serious paving. But we got a little bit of money in the other gasoline fund, but not enough for a lot of serious paving.
I had a complaint today about these up in town there around the edges of the sidewalks. Leaves and whatever, you know, was kind of banked up around and they're complaining about, about that.
Yeah. When you have large water runoffs like we've had, it's easy to might wash up a drift right quick. So we've got some of that. I'll try to address that with the men right away and see if we can take our shovels down there and clean that up, scoop it up, put it in a truck or a trailer.
Have you heard from the state when they're gonna look into the backup? Because that water, and as the temperatures get cold, that's gonna be a dangerous situation.
There's a lot of that water now.
Because there's, there's a lot of water standing because of the, the drain there.
We're supposed to meet with DOT tomorrow and they've been at Utah paving. We're gonna address that street matter that we talked about yesterday. And we're gonna address some other issues, including that water backup. You have heard anything about that, Henry Rodney?
They, I think they were bringing in a camera at one point to look in it to see where it was stopped up at.
Before Christmas, it was gonna be two weeks. And I asked Mike if that meant two weeks regular time or two weeks starting in January time. So either way, it's been plus two weeks. But it's really, I mean, the water's really totally.
It's really this bad.
It's gonna, it's gonna be dangerous on Monday, Sunday and Monday, especially trying to get in there on that little side street, so.
I know. Somebody's gonna slip and slide right there, there's no question.
And which, which street you talking about on that?
It's right there at the corner of where you turn out the high schools, where it runs to. But it goes all the way back up there to First State Bank. It comes out right behind First State Bank and, and it comes all the way down to the other intersection. It's a bunch of water.
And it's across the street over there too, in front of the Junior Food Mart and you come down to the first.
That, that street up by Bama Q on up the hill, the new stuff, that's, that's, that's counties. Well, you know, that water, it, and Rodney was talking about it, it's coming out of the hill there, coming out. And a lot of times it, it rains a lot. That road is really covered and if it freezes over, that'll be a dangerous thing right there.
I looked at it the other day, it looked like, it looked like a creek running down the pavement.
And then it'll come out in and cover the, you know, I've seen it just pretty well covered all the way down that hill. And if it come a freeze and that thin ice, you know, that could be really, really dangerous.
You're not wrong. It'll turn you around in a heartbeat.
You better believe it.
They might turn you just one time, it may turn you multiple times. Could turn you over. Terrible place there. It's even bad when it's raining with fit breezes.
Are you talking about on up the hill past Bama Q?
Just right there above Bama Q.
Okay. I worked the, an overturned car that flipped one time just up the hill from them. They had a cover and go.
That water is running right down the center of the road.
And then it stoked so neatly, feathered out. Tell me who owns that property up there. Your dad used to have, I call it the old bishop property. It's right across, up on the hill from where they're talking about here.
Oh, where the house used to be?
Yeah.
David and Margo Morris. The old white house used to sit up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, right by, on, up there in the WTV, up in like, in the old white house set up in there.
At the best storm house in this country.
Yeah, the storm house is there, but the house isn't.
That's a nice one.
Next work session, I'd like for each one of you to think of a subject you want to discuss. I'll put it on the agenda for you. A lot of these are, are things that I want us to talk about, but I'd like for you all to place an item each on our agenda for the next work session. And if I have anything, I'll add it to the bottom. But I, I'd like to cover what's on your minds as well as what's on my mind. And a lot of times my suggestions are dominating the work sessions. It's for all of us. So next work session, each one of you try to come with something you wanna talk about. Keep in mind, we're talking to the press when we talk in the camera.
Mayor, I have one other thing I wanted to bring up.
Okay, Rodney.
We, I, I found out I've got another man retired in the water department. So I need to get permission to post that job.
Rodney?
I don't know what's that.
You gonna post it to fill it with the.
Are they getting old or are they just retired?
I think the man's gonna have thirty-two years in.
Or you're gonna post it both ways.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, with that said, we'll have that on the agenda Monday night.
Is this one of those where they have to be certified?
You got any more of those?
No, it's not a trainee for the, for that. It's, it'll be like a metered construction worker.
Oh my goodness, that's funny.
Do I need to try to get somebody here from Air Evac to answer any questions to council, mayor, mayhem?
That's coming up and.
We gotta renew it in March.
Yeah, gotta legal that contract with Air Evac.
I didn't know if y'all wanted me to try to get somebody here or not.
Who's covered, who's not?
Uh, did y'all like to have one of their representatives come to the workshop? That's what she's saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, then we can ask those questions that's on our mind and get an answer before we have to have a long discussion on our council meeting. Or we'll know how we feel about vote for or against and.
No way, it used to be our contact person here in Hamilton. And Latier Jones was doing it, but I don't know if he's still in this area or not.
They've had a, they've had a big, you know.
Yeah, I don't think he's, he's a person.
It's a lot of changes and.
They've had mergers and acquisitions, haven't they?
Yeah.
Where they've put a lot of companies together.
Yeah, they bought a lot of companies all over the United States and adding, you know, and.
I'll try to get in touch with somebody and get them lined up for either this coming work session or the next one, whenever.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good thing as, I appreciate you bringing that up. We want to stay as informed as we can as a, as a government unit. We, we work together, we work for causes, for our citizens. And the things we do, even though sometimes they seem minute, it's important to somebody. So let's try to keep in mind that whatever we do, that we're doing it for the benefit of our communities. And we want everybody to feel like that they've got government working for them here in Hamilton, Alabama. I know the people that are distressed about their neighbor's dog or someone they feel like are not properly protecting their, they're devaluing their property by unkeeping their own properties. You know, I had that complaint this week. Somebody said the problem in my neighborhood is these people that won't keep their property. They're devaluing our properties by having such a mess on their properties. And, you know, that, that rings kind of true. And, and it, it's hard for some people to see that they need to keep picked up, their yard picked up and not keep bringing debris and, and jump into their house, putting it in the front yard, for goodness sakes. And, and some folks just don't understand that. It's just sad. And, and it does, it's a distraction to, to the neighborhoods. We've got lots of ugly places we're still gonna have to address. I had, I had the policeman working on one already this week. It's just one of many, but we're gonna take them one at a time. I reckon it's the way we're gonna have to do them.
And I think the key there's gonna be to follow through. It's, you know, once step one's done, that next week, the officer or Mike's gonna have to go back and, you know, it's, once they get to city court and they start paying, of course, they have the option to pay on the, at the very beginning. If, if they realize what they've done, they can just sign their citation, pay it and take care of it and not have to go to court. But if they choose not to, you know, once, once the citation's written and they choose not to clean it up and, and pay and they show up in court, I mean, that's, we're just gonna have to be firm because it's, I mean, it's outlined step by step.
The follow-up is important and very important. And, and actually, I had someone wanting me to throw the book at someone the other day. And I said, let me write them a letter from my desk. Would you give me that opportunity? I said, I believe these folks will react to a letter from me. I got a call this morning and the, and the person said, guess what? That cleanup's underway. And it's refreshing that we didn't have to throw the book at somebody. I don't like to throw the book at someone. I'd like for them to honor what should be done by agreement. But in some cases, it's too extreme and we have to enforce, as you say, the follow-up's so important to those kind of situations. I wish we could get our ugly spots attended to. We've, we've got, that's a distraction to people that might wanna come here and locate. And it makes us look really bad. Will y'all be thinking on anything that you want us to discuss that we can discuss publicly? I'll put it on our agenda. I'll have maybe a couple of items, but I'd like to have, to have at least one from each of you. How's Bobby's job? Does anybody know how Bobby's job is?